Thank you.
And they also had a thing about the Southern Union.
Yes, they did.
Jim, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Okay.
Which one of the seats?
This should be on the other of the document.
This is the one, the lines two, three?
Yes. I had to revise the initial schedule because I have a police chief at 10 o'clock and he had to take the Budget Committee on a tour of his facility. So we have a slight revision and on the good side, I don't think that Nancy's gonna be here today, so the whole schedule is off by 15 minutes in the right direction. So, just a slight overview, you're well aware of the fact that you initially received a provisional docket or provisional budget and it was with the understanding that it would be looked at and looked at and looked at and looked at. Well, it's still being looked at, but this is a first revision to it and the revision is a decrease of approximately quarter of a million dollars. The areas by which it came from was we revised our forecasted rates on fuel, oil, diesel, and gas. Because of our recent history, we had initially used for number two fuel, 375 a gallon, we've now reduced it to 275 per gallon. The initial diesel price was three and a quarter, we've reduced it to 275. Gas, we use 275 and the budget is now calculated at 250. The majority of the reduction was in the area of the police unfunded contribution.
Jim, when you do that, just give us the page number that you're...
Well, this is just an overview, but if you want the page number, I can.
Yeah, okay.
Of course, the fuel prices are throughout.
Right, 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 right.
But the police pension will be on page... 10.
Is it number?
Oh, yeah, that's another thing I should mention. I apologize for it being stapled in the wrong corner, but I don't know how to put it through the copy machine to get the staple in the right corner.
I think we'll have to have Nancy give you some training.
Yes.
Yes. There was no one here last night when I ran these off, so I said, "Well, I'll just apologize for it." But that's on page 10. It's at the top of the page and it's the unfunded liability. And the calculation there is that whatever we estimate we're taking out of the pension fund this year is what we're replacing. In other words, we're looking at approximately in retirement payments to the retirees, looks like it's about a half a million dollars coming out of the pension fund. So that's what we are replenishing, so we don't lose any ground as a result of that. And then there is another possibility which I have not included here and I'm very hesitant to include it. It's the funding that we may receive from selling land at the industrial park. We're moving forward with three acres of land, which we announced, you know, early in, well, I guess it was late October. And it's coming closer and closer. We're now working on a P and S, but there's 70% of that land sale available, if it goes through, to offset debt service. But I have not included that because...
Jim, what do you anticipate that dollar amount to be?
Which one?
On the possible sale of three acres of the industrial park.
$240,000 for the land and $30,000 for an option.
Total, Jim?
Total. So 70% of that would be available to offset debt service.
Thirty percent.
Isn't that money yet, ma'am?
Thirty percent by vote of the Financial Town meetings for improvements.
Right, and 70% for debt service. Well, that has not...
But you would reflect that, would you not, in the revenues on the front sheet of the docket, not so much as an offset, or would you?
At this point, I would not, at this early stage, until we got a little further.
No, I mean reflecting it at all is your point, but if it became firm, if you felt more comfortable...
Oh, as soon as we...
Wouldn't it be reflected in the revenues project?
Yes, yes. As soon as we get to a P and S that is satisfactory to both the buyer and the council, then I would immediately revise this. So, with that, and if you're interested in the details, I can certainly do this, but it probably would be kind of boring for you. I can tell you exactly which accounts that we reduced and by how much, because the Budget Committee has requested that I do that from the initial docket that we gave them. So I have it by account, but, I mean, I don't think I need to bore you unless you want it, the reductions in the fuel and...
The new figures are gonna be reflected in this document gave us dated 26209.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the original in this, so...
Yes.
Okay, I agree with you. Please don't bore us with that today. We can figure it out in our leadership.
And at this point, I would suggest that we just get going with our schedule and the Fire Chief is here to present his budget. And with that, Chief Floyd?
Good morning. I'm not sure, Mr. President, how you'd like to...
Add it to the pile.
Thank you, Rosemary.
I'm not sure how you'd like to do it, if you'd like to go line by line or...
If I can just mention one thing regarding these books. The chief's gonna go through his budget, but his budget has had several revisions and rather than making 21 copies of each of the revisions that we've gone through, what you have is pretty much the original submission, so it may not match the docket exactly, but the docket is the correct document at this point.
I am as ready as I will be.
It looked to me, under the salaries...
Yes, ma'am.
Coming down, that the increase in your, everything was level funded, the chief, the captain, the lieutenants, and the permanent firemen. That was the assumption that has given to us. The jump came in the overtime.
That is correct.
And that was a sizable jump from this year. Would you like to comment on that?
Absolutely. This has been, we have discussed this over several times.
Yes.
And if we can go back historically, what we have originally requested and what we end up with and then throughout the year, we end up having to transfer. And I will tell you exactly how I've come with this calculation. The calculation is based upon the current collective bargaining agreement that's in place. Run out on an Excel sheet, I put every single day on the calendar and I've showed this to Mr. Gonzalo so he can understand it, and I know where my vacancies are, I know when I have to fill, and I look at all 365 days of the year and we actually sit down and say, "Okay, we know that these are overtimes." So we know the number of shifts throughout the year that we have to fill. The number of 244 is the known, the known coverage that I have to get to provide for the coverage of the collective bargaining agreement.
Can you expand on how you determine where that overtime is gonna be used? You say you've calculated for the whole year and where it was gonna be required. What is it that happens in those areas that creates the need for overtime?
The staffing level, vacancies that we have throughout the shift. In other words, right now, I have one firefighter that's on an extended medical issue, I have another one that's deployed in Iraq, I had another firefighter, one of our new firefighters that we had brought on earlier in the year, because of all the current discussions that were taking place, he was fearful he was gonna lose a job, he received another job offer and he took it. And then also the death of firefighter Ladue. So when I play those out throughout the year, we're below the staffing levels that we have and with two men on vacation, which was negotiated in the last contract by Mr. Steckman and the minimum manning of seven by Mr. Steckman, whenever I come to a point that the vacations fall in the right order, I know I have to hire someone back. So when I look at that throughout the year, I know exactly where I have to place somebody, that I'm going to have to hire someone to fill in.
Chief, when you say hire someone, you mean cover the time with overtime?
That's correct, cover the lost time.
If the minimum manning were changed, either by contract or by legislation, and I realize that's a very large point, but if it were, what would you anticipate that number to go to?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna look to Mr. Gonzalo here for a minute, 'cause I don't wanna go into too many areas. Should we talk about the recent study that we've looked at?
We had a meeting with the union leadership from the fire department very recently requesting three things. We initially requested a waiver for the balance of this fiscal year in minimum manning. We requested a waiver on the contractual issue where two men can take vacation at the same time. And we also mentioned that they just received a one and a half percent increase January 1st, that if they waived that, that would be good also. We gave them three things. The, and now this is for the balance of this fiscal year, starting in, I believe, February 1st.
That's what we were looking at, yes, sir.
Minimum manning would save us $75,000.
That's correct.
Vacation, only one man on vacation at a time would allow us an additional, no, I think it was 75 in total.
Seventy-five total, correct.
Seventy-five in total.
If they gave all concessions, they gave, went back to a six-man minimum, dropped the two men on vacation, as we were before, prior to the institution of this contract. As of today, from June 30th, we would save $75,000.
$75,000. And they chose not to accept that. So if in five months, we could save $75,000 on those two issues, if you took that out to a year, as an example...
A hundred and fifty. So that is an area of considerable...
Absolutely. But again, it's an issue that I'm bound by, by the collective bargaining agreement, by the agreement. I can't, and this is a discussion I had had with the previous administrator, that, you know, if you need me, if you want me to violate it, somebody has to tell me to violate it and we can go wherever we have to go with it, but it's in place, I have to meet it.
Jim, just one question. Is it clear to you now that you're getting absolutely no concession at all from the firefighters under their contract?
At this point, pretty much. There is one item left on the...
Because what I'm gonna suggest is, if there's anything that's open, let's get a deadline. I mean, we really have to get these resolved. I think these are pretty straightforward and for putting our own numbers together, we have to know whether there's gonna be any concessions. If that's their answer, fine, we'll live with it, they'll live with it, but at least try to get it resolved.
Well, at this point, that's their answer for this year and if they won't do it this year, they're not looking to concede next year, that's for sure.
Their contract comes to an end in June.
Yeah.
So this'll, I'm sure, be a topic of considerable negotiation.
Oh, it will be.
Oh, they're aware of that?
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
But if we can go back to the original, the overtime issue as of last year, I think you remember, if last year's, I could pull it up, but last year's, I believe I had requested 214,000 and I think with all the transfers, I think we came in around 206,000. So, the number is not just an arbitrary number that's pulled out, it's a number that does a lot of thought and a lot of calculation that goes into, based upon salary, based upon days of leave and needed coverage for it, to cover those shifts. As you see, particularly my salary as it is, 75.5, 75.75 is last year's price, is last year's agreement is what was put in. Last year, I requested 76, we were looking, 'cause my contract came due this January, that there was supposed to be a raise, but we forego that and we have dropped it, so I've taken a cut this year and we'll stay level for next year, too. When you look at the salary accounts for this department, Mr. Gonzalo has it, I tried to do it out on the, in a spreadsheet for, similar to the docket, during that contract negotiations, there are several areas that I have stayed exactly where they are, with the exception of the current raises, and on the very last day of this contract, there is a change in there, longevity, they receive an extra half a percent on longevity, I believe. And that would be reflected in the 101 accounts, the 103, 105, 106, 168, and 109 accounts, which are all contractual items, which are stayed level funded or have seen some change because of the change of our membership, but those are all tied to the contract. Those would change depending upon what is negotiated. Sometimes when negotiations go on, it's missed that, you know, we talk about pay raises, but in their contracts, certain things are tied to other items, which are a percentage of what their, a pay increase would be. So I tried to reflect that, to show that where those would be. Other than that, I don't know if there's any other question. If you'd like me to go down line by line and explain any of the items that we have, I know you have a lot that you wanna do, if you'd like me, I can...
Chief, I have one question. I see that we still have $4,800 in the budget for pagers. In today's world of cell phones, does everybody have a cellphone or do we get into the problem of, "Well, if you want me to use my cellphone, then the town should pay for it"? Why pagers?
Pages are what we use for the emergency callback of all the personnel. These are two-tone pages. There is an all call or there is an individual call. In other words, if we need to call an individual back, we do it. We find that this, for us, is one of the most cost-effective ways to get the men back for an emergency if we need them. It's really not a convenience type of thing, it's one of the necessities. I mean, there are other ways we could go about it, but they don't seem to have the distance and the coverage that these pages provide. Each pager costs us, I think it's eight dollars and something a month for this, I don't even think it's eight dollars a month, seven and change, I think it is, for the pages, but therefore the emergency callback of the off-duty personnel. Honestly, I'd rather get rid of my pager, too. It's a pain.
You're the boss. You're the boss.
I'm the boss and I'm the one who has to be there.
There's not much comment that I can make about heat, fuel, oil, tires, electric. It is what it is, I think.
I mean, again, we, you know, the heat issue is, our north end station's a 50-year-old building, tried to do as much as we can to improve. The office, my office thermostat's at 60, the apparatus floors, we try to keep them as low as we can. They use their old furnaces, they use heat without any type of energy efficiency changes to them, they pretty much, and that's based, those numbers are based upon actual gallonage usage, which we've tried to keep, I don't know, over the past three years, has stayed fairly consistent. The only difference that has changed there is the actual cost of the fuel.
Tell me why firefighter training has doubled?
It has not doubled, sir. Originally, what I had put in was $10,000, that was cut back last year, trying to get it back up, where I have to pay for paramedical courses, I have certification levels that I have to pay for for them, and ongoing classes that I have to provide to keep everybody's certification up. I have to pay the state of Rhode Island or I have to pay an instructor, not my personnel, but a certified instructor or coming to do that.
Chief, under the capital plan...
Yes, sir.
I see engine four for the year ending '09 and '10, $550,000 is not to replace?
The capital plan, what I've tried to work out is that on a rotating basis, the life expectancy, I'm trying to get 25 years out of each engine. We have five of them, one of them is reserved, so when a truck goes down, we can fill someone in. Excuse me, there's four engines and trying to fill one of them in and trying to drag them out. Right now, that's about the average cost of what it is to replace a fire apparatus. Takes two years to get a piece of apparatus. So if we were, let's say, during the Financial Town meeting, it was approved to say, "Okay, you need to go out to bid for a truck," we'd have to put specifications, bid, go out, and then we're looking at 18 to 20 months at least to build time before the truck would even be delivered. So in the meantime, our fleet's getting older, I'm trying to replace the oldest vehicle I have, take my most-used vehicle now and move that to a little bit less-used location to try to prolong its life, but in the meantime, everything else is still getting used and still wearing. Even those mileage figures that you have there, those have changed greatly since this was put together. I think I put this together in beginning of December, I think it was. Just trying to look long-term. I'm trying to plan for the future, I'm trying to keep this going. The more we hold it off, it's eventually what will happen is a majority of our pieces of apparatus will all come due at the same time.
You're looking for $800,000 for next year for that tow ladder?
Absolutely.
God bless you.
At least I'll be honest, Mr. Costa, I'm looking for it. I'm looking, again, looking for the future.
Why do we need it, Chief? Why do we need it?
Because we have to get, when we have fires and we are able, I'll give you an example, Bruce's Saw Shop fire. We rely heavily on the dependence of mutual aid for a ladder. Part of the firefighting strategy to minimize loss in a structure is to open the roof and let the fire out through the roof, and you can come underneath and knock it down before it spreads laterally under the flat of the roof. Bruce's Saw Shop, we called three fire departments to get a ladder truck. We called Westport, not available, Fall River, in use, Portsmouth, they were tied up on another call. Eventually, we got them, but in the meantime, a lot of the damage and destruction was gone. Bruce's Saw Shop is no longer in Tivon, it's now in Westport. We lost the business. Fast forward, let's go to Joanne's Music, 524 Main Road. Small structure, we were able to get to the roof quickly, open the roof up. The next morning with that fire, all those businesses were open, with the exception of Joanne's. There's a difference with getting to the roof and opening. We saved the businesses, we saved jobs, we kept a business in Tivon. It's important to have. We can't get to the upper floors of structures. Someone's trapped up there, Walnut Street shortly after I got here. We couldn't get, we had someone trapped on the third floor, we can't get it. We rely heavily on mutual aid, that's not always available.
Walnut Street, you had two ladders available. The ladders couldn't be put up because of the wires, so that's a little different situation because there was two ladders that showed up at Walnut Street.
Late in the fire, Mr. Bowen.
Couldn't get...
Fall River's ladder four showed up from the north end of Fall River.
My understanding was they couldn't put up the ladders because of the wire issues, too. So, I mean, there's extenuating circumstances.
We can disagree on that, sir, but I will tell you that Fall River will not send us their closest ladder and their availability of their ladder is reduced. That's what's happening.
That's not really before us on this proposed docket, is it?
That's correct.
I mean, obviously, there's...
But my point is, you have hired me to give an opinion of protecting the community. We have some very large structures, we minimize loss by being able to fight fires tactically in a certain area. We've needed it for a long time, we just haven't been there.
We expect you to be the advocate for the department, Chief.
I understand.
And you expect us to...
You have to do what you have to do also. That's why this balance works the way it works.
We would expect that you...
I think it's been clear in good time.
I understand.
We have provided, you know, equipment to the fire department as necessary and when it's in bad times, sometimes things have to be delayed a lot longer than we would even like to see them delayed.
I understand. I do understand that. Please don't, but if I don't put it forward to you and say it's not there...
I understand that and I hope your guys understand also, you know, when we come to them looking for, you know, relief in certain areas, it's because, you know, we're gonna get to situations like this, and probably part of the situation with a ladder truck is number of people it takes to service that equipment, how many more firefighters do we have. It's not, it's not as cut and dry as we buy a piece of equipment.
I understand.
It's what we gotta do to man the piece of equipment, what we gotta do, you know. We run into a problem and we say, "Give us some help," and they go, you know, "Talk to us in June." You know, so we become a little more reluctant. I become a little more reluctant because I've said it before and I can't overemphasize, you know, "We're gonna help those people, help us out in this, in this situation where we're in better times." And I think we've been pretty generous in good times, but we got a tough time and we're gonna work on a tough time.
Understood.
I don't have anything else.
You say understood, but you're still indicating that you have champagne taste with beer money.
Well, Mr. Costa, let me ask you a question. As a head of a department, to put my needs through to the people who have the decision-making power, do you feel I should paint the whole picture for you or that I should reduce that picture and try to sweep things under the rug? I feel I should be putting forward to you what the picture, the future needs are so that you can make long-term decisions also.
I would say that all I would be looking for is to reduce your requirements to what your true needs are. And based on what Don Bowen just said and what I said prior to him, I don't know whether asking for $800,000 for a ladder truck is based on a real need. How often, I mean, we've been in a town for 200 years and we've never had a ladder truck yet.
No, sir, that's not correct. You have had a ladder truck.
We have?
Yes, sir, you have.
That's right. We had a ladder truck that we let sit down at East Road in Tivon until it rotted because we had no place to put it and we sold the ladders to Narragansett.
That's right.
It was the only salvageable part of that piece of equipment.
But in truth, the town has changed.
It has.
And, but we don't have the, I mean...
I want you, I want you to sit there and advocate for the needs of the department. I mean, I want whatever group sits here as a council to hear what the needs are and we need to know what our needs are.
Absolutely.
We also are gonna run this town like, you know, in a responsible manner to say, you know, wish lists are nice and it would be nice to have that piece of equipment and it has, it has a need, you know, within, you know, the confines of Tivon, but at this time and in the foreseeable future, it may not fit to what we can afford to do and that's plain and simple. But I do, I hope that all our department heads continue to advocate, you know, for the needs of the department, because those are the things that are gonna guide and help us, you know, in making decisions. We're gonna have to make those decisions about what's the most prudent, what's gonna get us through a tough time because, you know, although we'd love to have that, there's a lot of households that can't afford to pay the tax and so forth, so we gotta do whatever it is, you know, to make sure that everybody gets by in better times, we'll get back to where we need to be. We've been there before and we'll be there again. It's just not gonna happen in the next year or two. And, you know, the realistic approach to that is you continue to ask, we'll continue to say no if we can't provide.
Understood.
I gotta say one thing, Don. I've sat here off and on for several years. We've never had good times on the municipal side.
Well, we've been much better.
I mean, certainly better than we are now, but I would not stress the good times because these budgets have always been a struggle for us. However, I don't have any more questions.
I'll just say thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for listening, thank you for letting me present.
Thank you for taking your time on a Saturday to be here, Chief.
It's not a problem, sir, that's what we're here for.
No, no, but our time is important, your time is important and I know you give us enough of it and I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Good luck with your endeavors.
And get that ladder truck, right?
I'll keep fighting.
I know.
I expect you to. I would think less of you if you didn't.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I, according to our schedule, I guess.
DPW.
DPW's.
Good morning.
Yeah?
I can step on it.
Yep.
Where is that?
We're, we're in the back.
Is it blue or white?
White.
Chief, I haven't checked the budget, at least we don't have it as yet from, how are we on the snow, snow removal this year?
Well, compared to last year, seventeen storms, we're at twenty-five right now. And unfortunately, many have been happening on the weekends and Sundays, which is time and a half and double time. But we're at twenty-five storms already, and it's the beginning of February. So we're spending a lot of time on snow and ice.
Where, where does that put us financially? You know, dollar-wise, dollar-wise, have.
Dollar-wise, there's, there's really three accounts that affect our snow and ice. The first is materials. I had a hundred and ten thousand dollars for materials, that would be salt and sand. I've spent all of that. Monday, you're going to get a request from me to transfer another thirty-five hundred dollars and I believe another five thousand dollars, was it, Jim? Yeah. So we're overspent, we've overspent our budget now, you know, by roughly thirteen thousand dollars, I wanna say. The shed that we have our salt and sand in now could, is enough supply to, to fight two more good-sized storms and maybe four small-sized storms. My overtime account for DPW personnel started at fifty-five thousand dollars, it's down to fourteen. And the other aspect of snow and ice is the hired equipment. We started at fifty thousand dollars. I'm down to ten, no, down to fifteen, and out of that fifteen, a request Monday is to take five and put it in the materials account. So we're down to five thousand dollars, that's one storm. So that's where we're sitting with the snow and ice account.
Chief, Director, one of the items that the town administrator, in order to reach our, our shortfall in the revenue sharing, has identified the paving account.
Mm-hmm.
What will that, what was planned, what will that take on? That's not related to this.
Yeah, I, I think there is a small amount of funds left, and that's to buy black top, patching materials to do our, our portholes. I think as you all drive around, you know that the roads in Tiverton aren't in the best shape. Once a road goes past the resurfacing stage and gets into full reconstruction phase, you're talking about triple the cost. We have many roads in town where the tips of boulders are physically sticking out of the road, which causes havoc with our plowing. I've, a, a lot of roads are, are holding water because the crowns are gone, or the gutters aren't built correctly. I made a conscientious effort in the year I've been here to, to address those drainage and paving issues, because they call, they call, they cause snow and ice callouts, because if the road holds water, it gets cold at night, that's automatically four hours of overtime and equipment that I have to send in. So our roads definitely need maintenance. I think that they have not received the proper maintenance over many years, and consequently, it's gonna cost us a great deal of money to catch up. We have a hundred and ten miles of roadway, plus or minus, in the town, and a lot of them are short, they're not, you know, we have Fishers Long and a couple of others are long, but most of them are all side streets. A lot of times, you're gonna drive around and you're gonna see that the blacktop is up to the top of the curb because they've been resurfaced. That causes water to run in driveways, constant calls about cellus flooding. So it's, it's, it's serious, taking this money away, I mean, if you ask me a number, I would say we would probably need three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars every single year to keep our roads in a condition that, that's needed. And obviously, that hasn't been the case over many, many, many years. We're losing these, you know, particularly this ninety-five thousand dollars. I've worked out a partnership with that money with the water department. They do a lot of trenching, put in new water lines. What I inherited was the idea that if a road is in terrible, terrible condition and the water department puts a line down, they just really patch the road. If they come in and they put a water line down on a new road, they're gonna be responsible to resurface it. So I, I worked with the water department and, and through a partnership, I was gonna use that ninety-five thousand dollars, and they were basically going to put in the same amount, and we were gonna get five roads completely done. Junk roads that are, that are, are, were gonna be completely done. So now I'm gonna lose that, and we're gonna lose the money that the water department was gonna chip in. So, you know, that, that, that was like a fifty percent savings and, and that kind of, I'm not happy about that, but I surely understand the position that town administrators in trying to find money. And you're gonna hear this, you're gonna hear this from everybody that walks in, in the door, there's no doubt in my mind, but Council, I guess that's how would I, I'd address the, the issue of paving.
One of the, one of the things that is remaining level funded is Storm, Storm Water Management Two. What kind of obligation are we under? I, I seem to remember that, that there are a lot of cases where we have water running into the, the bay and the river, and at some point, we're obligated to start controlling those. And, and my question is, do we have a deadline where we have to start doing that? Because this, if I remember correctly, this all spins back to state, which in turn spins back to a federal EPA requirement.
You're exactly right. It started with the EPA, pushed down to the state DEM, and then it was, that mandate is forwarded down to us. That money that you see in there is for consultant services. We have to prepare and submit to DEM a yearly report, which includes many, many pages of a lot of information. Part of that information that's required, the consultant puts together to the tune of thirty-five hundred dollars, and that's just the basic cost for him to put the yearly report together, and we will probably be presenting that report to the board, I hope, at your last February meeting, 'cause it's due March tenth. The other thirty-five hundred dollars is used for the inspections of the outfalls. I just found out that DEM is now gonna require us to get the GPS coordinates of every single outfall that we have to the tune of like a hundred and sixty. That's due by March tenth, along with putting everything on an Excel spreadsheet, which we don't have, so, and, and possibly tagging every outfall with either a number or a tag. It looks like I'm gonna be doing that, because the thirty-five hundred dollars is only, won't even cover the cost. So in the next four weeks, you know, together with the thirty-five dollars that I have, we're gonna try to put that program together so we can meet the, the mandate of DEM for storm water.
The hundred and sixty dollars or a hundred and sixty?
Outfalls.
Hundred and sixty outfalls.
Oh, different outfalls, that, that dump into the, either wetlands adjacent to the Secarnet or directly into the Secarnet. And I just found this out last week.
Yeah, you know, if we can't get it accomplished by March, it's like, then we find, no, if it, if it doesn't get done, we'll give DEM our standard response, if we can't afford to do it at this time, we'll get it done, you know, as necessary.
We will.
I think that's a little.
Yeah, a little bit.
A little short notice for something that big.
I often wonder what DEM is doing up there.
Sending down, sending down a lot of unfunded mandates, that's what they're, that's what they're doing up there.
They're working on it.
If we took every one of the mandates seriously, maybe we do, I don't know, but we might as well close the door and go out of business ourselves. Declare bankruptcy.
We had to get approval to do that, you know?
An irritation, I shouldn't have.
Louise spoken like a true lawyer, you know?
Well, you have to get approval from the General Assembly to go into bankruptcy for a city and town, so try that.
Just lock the door. Everybody resign, lock the door and say, there you go.
We oughta lock the door up there in Providence, too.
Okay, let's get back to the business.
Mr. Director, on the rubbish and recycling collection, you know, I see it's roughly five hundred and seventy, so thousand, okay? That's the pickup, and then the transfer to the recyclables to Johnston.
That is correct, but there's a lot more to that number than, than meets the eye. Under the Patriot contract, our, our rubbish disposal contract, in that contract, they are entitled legally to a CPI increase every year, a consumer price increase. Last year, that was six percent. I, I am estimating this year four percent. There's, there's no basis in which I can substantiate that, because it, you know, you average last year's with the, the next year's, which will end June thirtieth, so I, I just guessing a number. Maybe it'll be a negative, I, I don't know.
What CPI are they using?
In the contract, it calls for, out of Boston, whatever rates that are existing in Boston, it specifically says what Consumer Price Index formula we use. And the contractor submits his request to me, and I review it online, pull up all the information and verify that request. So in essence, let me see if I can find my page with the, here it is. I don't know where I put my number. In essence, if you take that six percent last year and four percent coming up this year, the number is more like six hundred and five thousand dollars. Last year, Mr. Steckman negotiated with the Patriot contractor under the budget issues we had last year, and they appeased, they appeased the town by eliminating two yard waste pickups. Yard waste pickup probably cost the town around fifty-one hundred dollars. Because of the level funding in this item last year, I had to find money to make up that six percent CPI. The way I did it this year is I eliminated four more yard waste pickups, so there was a total of basically six yard waste pickups, thirty thousand dollars eliminated this year. Under this particular budget that's before you, it includes a four percent CPI that I'm, that I'm anticipating, but we could be down, we're down to about one and a half yard waste pickups. Now, when you're asking me about a half, I estimated that the white goods pickups that we, the town pays twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents for each item, has been kind of been going down because the economy's going down, people aren't buying as many washers and dryers. So I'm hoping that that aspect of the contract will make up the other half, and we can go back to two yard waste pickups. But that's where we're kind of sitting with, with Patriot. And part of the discussion that I was involved with, with Mr. Steckman and the, the owner of Patriot, was that, you know, le, you know, under the contract, it was funded for last year, and the ten thousand dollars, they requested kind of a quid pro quo, and was asking that they would like to extend their contract. Right now, they have a five-year contract, we're into the second year. Under the contract, we, the town can extend that contract one time up to five years. So as a quid pro quo, that was part of the negotiation, that hasn't come before you. I, I mean, I, I would recommend it, I think they're doing an excellent job, responsive. There have been a case now and then where there's been a small conflict, but anything they ask, to ask us to do, sometimes it's to go back on a route two days ago, that a, that a resident complains that they didn't pick his particular rubbish up, even though they did the whole street, they still go back and do it, even if it's across town. So they really have been responsive in all of the requests that I have, and they're doing a good job. So, you know, I would be in favor of extending that, but as a, it's a quid pro quo, it's, it's not in writing, it was just part of the discussion, and I guess that's what I can say about the, the rubbish contract.
The, the only other question I have is, is regarding the recycling portion.
Okay.
Obviously, we know that with this economy, recyclables are down, and I don't know whether or not Johnston will be giving us a.
I, I would say they're not gonna be giving us any money for our recyclables. I've, you know, I've attended a, a minisimo meeting with them where all the towns were there about two weeks ago. Their volume is down seventy percent. They are pretty much even with getting rid of the recyclables now, in other words, they're not making a great deal of money, if any. It's not costing them anything, but he was saying that everybody thinks rubbish is, you know, recession-proof, and the proof is it isn't. You know, their volumes are down seven percent. And another thing about, about, you know, rubbish, that, you know, I've given Jim a comprehensive plan, because in two thousand and thirteen, we're twenty-eight percent recyclables now, the state's gonna require us to be at fifty percent. And I'm showing you, drive around town, you see a house with eight barrels out, full of rubbish and no recycle bins. Our landfill, when it closes in six years, is gonna require four million dollars that we don't, will not have in landfill closure. That's beyond the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year you put in now. So in six years, the town's gonna come up with, have to come up with four million dollars, and now we're going to have to haul all of our rubbish to Johnston, and that's gonna be over three hundred thousand dollars a year. So any, any way that we can lengthen the use of our landfill is going to save the taxpayers a great deal of money. And the only way that we're gonna be able to do that is to get our recycling rates up and, and have our rubbish volume down. Last year, our recycling rates went up, but I think I understand why, the volume of our rubbish went up thirteen and a half percent in our landfill. I'm convinced that rubbish is. I'm convinced that rubbish is coming from out of town because all of the surrounding towns have different sorts of fees, if you will, or licenses, or, you know, whatever it takes, but all of our surrounding towns have them. Uh, we even have an incident in, I'll say, Pelletier Road Lane, where a fellow was putting out a mattress or a box spring every single week.
Wow.
It was reported to me and we took care of that situation. I think, I think our rubbish collection is being abused. I'm, I'm convinced of that. And, um, you know, I have a, a comprehensive plan we're discussing at the landfill committee. I've given it to Jim to try to get our arms around this whole, whole issue of landfill and recycling. Uh, Johnston is, um, going to be filled in two thousand and twelve. They just gotten, uh, starting construction on an extension in Johnston, but even in that case, that gets us to twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-five is not going to be anywhere in Rhode Island to dump your rubbish. New York City pays a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton to load it on a train and bring it to, to Georgia. Right now, the, the dump rate in Johnston is thirty-two dollars a ton for municipal, and I think about, they just dropped it, seventy-two dollars a ton for, for commercial dumping or private dumping. It's going to probably be, other than the schools, the most expensive issue that the town's going to have to deal with, and it's not far out in the future. It's not far out.
You know, Steve, we have been waiting for recommendations from the, from the landfill committee because I think all of us are aware, there are a number of people in this town that are not recycling what they should.
No doubt, no doubt.
And, um, I mean, I have a root on Friday morning that I routinely follow, and I'm shocked by the number of people who are not recycling or recycling a minimum.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you drive by, you know, there are families there, there's soda bottles, there's this, and it doesn't exist. So, I think, I think we'd be pretty receptive to, you know, East Providence instituted the, if you don't recycle, we're not going to pick up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, I'll tell you, I, I think we're all aware of that.
Because I, I brought it up with Jim at our department, uh, staff meeting Friday, and he suggested that a, a council workshop or a, a full, uh, you know, meeting of the council would be the, the place to, to discuss this, and, um, I, I totally agree with him.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that obviously we, we really have to look at that. I know some surrounding communities, you have to go and buy bags, you know, for trash before they'll pick them up. Uh, I think one socket, uh, every homeowner is charged, I think, like a hundred dollars a year for trash pickup. I mean, so that there are ways, you know, in order to offset that, but I think recycling obviously is, is the way that we really have to force our, our residents to recycle. We cannot afford, you know, with the life, uh, of our own landfill and then to go to Johnston, you know?
There's no doubt. And we'll be coming to you next week is my proposals to address. Right now, we pick up and dump in our landfill mattresses, box springs, tires, couches, uh, you know, that doesn't belong in our landfill. I mean, it fills it up, it doesn't degrade, so you'll be seeing that coming up, I believe, at the, at the next meeting Monday, I think is addressing fees and things like that. I, I'm...
I believe that's, that's...
Oh, it's been postponed?
The fee's around the twenty-sixth, I believe.
Okay, okay.
Do, do we still rent a tub grinder a couple of times a year to knock down the big waste?
Yes, we do, yeah. Um, and, and, you know, we, uh, we accept any, any, um, trees, scraps, woods, you know, not lumber at this particular time, or demolition materials. Uh, we have a huge pile in, in June, um, we rent that big grinder, uh, for five thousand dollars a day, total of two days, ten thousand dollars, that grinds all of this waste up. Uh, we mix that particular, uh, grindings with, um, landfill cover, so we're technically recycling all of that. And we use it for landfill cover. Landfill cover costs us about eight dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, a cubic yard now. So, you know, we do recycle all of those grindings right into the landfill and make it of good use.
Director, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. Director, on, on your, on the meetings you go to on long-range discussions, is there anybody talking about the solution that they use throughout Europe, which is to use incineration to burn the trash and also co-generate electricity? I mean, it's, but there's nothing magic about it. Uh, Germany, France, Great Britain, all do it extensively, they've got pollution control.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is anybody thinking about some alternatives?
Yeah, I do. I do. Every meeting, it's exactly what I say to them. This is the only way that would address the rubbish issue and address an energy issue, two wins at the same time. There's a state law that's in effect right now, this is what they tell me, there's a state law that's in effect right now that has eliminated the possibility of Rhode Island, anywhere in Rhode Island, building a waste energy plant.
There's a history...
And that's the answer they give me.
You understand this, you're probably coming from Massachusetts, but sometime in the late eighties, there was a massive, um, issue with regard to a proposed incinerator at Quonset. And, um, uh, I'm, the community is near Quonset. Uh, I think it was Representative Sue Hensler who got, drove that through. It was in the early nineties.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, it was a green issue, but I think the technology has come a long, 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 long way, uh, in which, you know, the carbon output is controlled.
There was a facility proposed for Tiverton, the Bedminster.
Yes.
For the industrial park, and that was...
I would support that totally.
No, 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 it was, it was not met with, with good reception in Tiverton, so...
Sure. Could you think of a better place? I mean, on-off ramps right there?
I think, yeah, I can think of a better place.
Oh, you can?
The technologies have changed.
I mean, I think of a lot better places.
But I'm just saying, but, you know, that's something that, uh...
People in East Tiverton would not be through, you know?
No one, it's like a jail.
But I have another question for you.
Yes.
Well, before we, wait a minute, before we leave that topic, I think it's really important to stress the fact that in Europe, they have waste incinerators in the middle of large cities, and you don't even know they're there. So, it's, you know, this bugaboo about, oh, it's a pollutant, et cetera, et cetera, uh, that's twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old. And we have to start getting real because if you start paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton today to haul it to Georgia, pretty soon that's going to be two hundred and fifty dollars a ton. So somewhere, people have got to quit living in the past and start recognizing the future because it would also serve a very valuable purpose to lower our dependence on oil for, and coal for power generation. So it's, it's, it's right there, it's nothing magic, it's no secret, take a plane to Europe, pretty cheap this time of the year, and you can see for yourself, anybody can. It's just, you know, it's just keeping your head in the sand to keep talking about, well, in the old days, blah, blah, blah. So, I'll stop.
See, so, good, because, um, there's no emission free from incinerated, incineration, and that is not twenty-five years old because, um, uh, the, um, they, they do not have the technology today to eliminate what is coming out, whether it's mercury or whatever. And that has been a problem under the state, uh, uh, plan guide, that there is a recognition. So, don't say that, uh, the emissions have, it hasn't been, and, um...
And those, those discussions, believe me, are for another time. I mean, I think we're going to get through, you know, our budget issues here, and I mean, we recognize some of our problems and, and some of what our costs are going to be, but you know, this one here today, we're talking about the immediacy of what we've got to deal with, you know, in May for, for next year.
Yeah. One question, you, you talk about abuse of our landfill, and one of the things that I thought we addressed the last time, we addressed the entire dump situation or the landfill situation. We've tried to, uh, provide, um, no commercial, um, refuse coming in. Is that working? Is that not working?
That, that is working. Uh, we do, uh, not allow any of that, um, which is a burden, which is a burden on our taxpayers, obviously. If they do a little remodeling job, they have to, you know, hire a dumpster and that dumpster goes to Johnston. That's, that's a lot of money. We do allow one forty-pound barrel per week for our, for our residents, you know, to put, you know, cut up wood or tile or whatever they do, but, you know, that doesn't go far. But as far as commercial, Council Drif, you're absolutely right, there's no, no commercial dumping.
Then where is the abuse?
I think the abuse is coming from residents outside our town that have friends in our town or relatives, and they have to pay to have their barrel or blah, blah, or something disposed of in their town. Instead, they bring it here and it's disposed of free. Because there's no other reason for our landfill to increase thirteen and a half percent in one year when our recycles went up. It, that doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, uh, and that's what I think is happening.
Thank you.
Are we, are we having our trash hauler monitor some of these situations and if he sees, you know, as you said, the repeated abuse of, if there's a mattress every week outside someone's house, he's obviously, you know, doing something for somebody else because he can't generate that many?
Yeah, they, they have been notified, we have direct cell contact with them, and they are on the lookout for...
Unusual amounts of trash?
Unusual amounts.
All the time at particular...
All the time, on all their routes. And, uh, they notify us immediately and we send the resident a certified letter.
Okay.
Anybody else have any?
Well, I just, just have, just one. You know, obviously, you know, we're here to discuss, you know, ways of savings, you know, and, uh, I don't know if you have any ideas of areas, you know, within your own area that, that you think you can impact to give the town some savings?
Uh, you know, one thing that I have suggested, and it's in this budget, um, if you look under capital expenditures, um, there's an item to purchase, a capital purchase of a used mower brush cutter. I've located a, um, a ninety horsepower diesel, um, tractor, uh, similar, in fact, exactly like the one the state uses right out here on twenty-four. It's a hundred thousand dollar machine that's been always garaged and has fifteen hundred hours on it, which is really just broken in for a diesel. Um, I'm asking for twenty-two thousand dollars to buy it. Right now, we pay a contractor under...
roadside grass and brush cutting.
Operating, yeah, operating expenses for the D P W, roughly twenty thousand dollars a year to do the same thing. The fellow we use is a, a, a great guy, he's eighty-six years old, his piece of equipment is probably almost that old, so things don't move very fast.
Yeah, I don't think they've made many olivers lately.
Uh, he does work at a very reasonable rate. To rent this piece of particular, particular equipment would cost a hundred and twenty dollars an hour, he works at sixty-five dollars an hour. Uh, but I firmly believe that it only makes common sense to own a piece of equipment. I agree, we'd have to put one of our men on it, we'd have to maintain it and gas it, but for the same price as we're going to hire a contractor next year to cut our, um, in this particular mower has a drag behind cutters, it also has an arm that reaches and trims all the branches from coming into the road. It'll be two to three times faster than, than, than what we're doing now. Uh, the machine is adaptable, um, if, if we're lucky enough to, uh, be able to purchase it, uh, my next step would be, to be asked for a grader blade. Uh, we have a lot of roads in which twice a year, spring and fall, gravel town roads that we go out and fill and grade, we pay a grader a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to do that. Um, anytime there is a small project that requires a backhoe, we have to load our big backhoe onto a big trailer and pull it with the, with our big six-wheeler to wherever it has to go, do the work and bring it back. Next step would buy, you know, would be to buy a bucket, our small backhoe attachment, I mean, it's tremendously adaptable. I mean, so, you know, this is, I think, the one area in the budget where it only makes sense, and it virtually will cost us the same price as we pay a guy every year to mow. And we'll own it, we'll operate it, and it'll, it'll be multiple, multiple use. Uh, realistically, I mean, to cut this budget, well, let's just start with salt and sand. Two years ago, since two years ago, the price of sand has doubled. Uh, I just checked with Ry Dart, right now, we're paying ten dollars and seventy-nine cents a ton. I just checked with Ry Dart, the low bidder is at seventeen fifty, that's next year. So I would anticipate when we go out to bids, we're going from ten dollars and eighty cents to somewhere near ten fifty. Last year, through last year's budget, my salt was costing fifty-four dollars a ton. The year before last, um, in July first, the cost of salt went to eighty-six dollars a ton, a seventy-two percent increase. I can pave a road for less money per ton than it costs us for a ton of salt. It's getting unbelievably outrageous, I don't know of any other alternatives. Uh, the number you see in front of me for your, for my sand and salt account has been level funded over the last two years. Uh, that's driving, and the number of storms this year, and the price of what I'm paying for materials is driving, I'm, I'm over my budget already in the beginning of February with the sand and salt account. Uh, so, um, I would just, not like to say this, but pray for global warming. I mean, we're going to be in big trouble with this level-funded budget again if we anticipate just normal winter next year, as far as the sand and salt account goes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? When you were talking about paving roads and so forth, the thought just occurred to me to ask you, if you were able to get anything on that shovel-ready project that we put together in anticipation of federal funding, you know, on this stimulus business? Have you had any of this?
Uh, Councilor Cross, I, I did not answer your question. Um, I, you know, to, to put out an estimate in that short a time, I would have to go measure all the roads, you know, and it's only not resurfacing, you know, anytime we would do a road, there's, you have to raise the drainage structures, you have to do a lot of other work, so I really didn't have time to go ahead and, uh, put a roadway, pro, resurfacing roadway program together for them.
Would it be possible, for example, to use specifications or whatever bin information we have on the last project and add ten percent to it, whatever the, the growth rate is? I wonder if that would support a request. Certainly doesn't cost anything. Have we already submitted this list?
Yeah, the list, they, we, the timeframe to put this list was ridiculously short, I mean, and, uh, and to shovel-ready, and I, I just didn't have the time to go ahead and do that particular, uh, case. One thing I just want to pers, you know, if, if you look at, I just want to make a point for the public, and, and you probably already know, when you look at the number of maintenance workers we have, there's ten in total. Uh, when you add up the vacation time, sick lots of time, personal leave and holidays, that in essence almost wipes out one whole man year. Now I'm down to nine. Out of the nine, one is my foreman Bruce, who runs around with his head cut off, just trying to schedule work, get materials. I mean, so now I'm down to really eight guys that really are doing the work. Out of those eight, one man is assigned to the landfill six days a week, one guy is assigned to the landfill three days a week when it's open to residents. So in essence, that's two more people. I have a full-time mechanic that takes care of the fire department, the D P W, and the school department. So when you're looking at over a hundred miles of road, I in essence have five workers that do all of this. And I just want to praise them because I think if you drive around... if you drive around and you look at the condition of the roads and you think that there's over a hundred miles and five guys are taking care of them, they're doing a darn good job. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that we haven't had one grievance. They get out there and they work all day. They work hard all day. They'll jump on a shovel. They'll jump on, so there's none of this Teamster baloney where, oh, I can't do that. That's not my job. They all pitch in and they work their buns off, so.
And we do know and appreciate that. You know, I think most of the people here have sung the praises of that department for some time because of what they can accomplish with so few people. And we do appreciate that.
That's good. Thank you.
I think Don talks for the whole council.
Yes, he does.
It's extraordinary.
Hmm. It's amazing. I don't know how they do it.
That group is truly an amazing group, and, you know, we've been singing their praises. You know, we can't say enough of what those guys accomplished. And even the snowstorms, you know, for them guys to work all day and then spend all night plowing and for the most part be back there the next day, you know, to work. They are truly amazing. And you never hear them complaining about, about anything, like you said. The fact we don't get grievances, the fact we don't, and whatever job it is they're asked to do, they do it. And sometimes, you know, they probably got reason to complain.
There's no doubt.
Without a doubt. You know, I know I personally cannot say enough about that group, and they know how I feel because I've spoken to most of them and let them know I feel that way.
Sure. You have been down the shop, and we appreciate that. You're always welcome. And it gives a boost to the men when they see, you know, members of the town council show up and show interest and take a look at our facility. And one other thing I'd like to just say is, as you noticed on the capital purchase list, other than the mower, and based on our situation, I have not requested anything. I just want to let you know that the newest snowfighting piece of equipment we have is twenty-five years old. And most of the equipment, other than the, you know, landfill dozer, and we do have a relatively new loader, are all antiquated. That requires a great deal of work by my magician mechanic. We beg, borrow, steal, duct tape, everything we have. But, you know, I just want to bring to your attention that this can't go on forever. There's no capital request here. Under the circumstance, I even put a capital program together, you know, and things are getting tough. Our machinery is breaking, and I don't know how long even Paul can keep it going any much longer.
We've been going through, Steve, we've been going through this. I've been on the council since ninety-five. When I came on the council in ninety-five and got an equipment list for the DPW plows, I think back then there were all gasoline engines. They were the old internationals. And when I saw the dates, I said to Ray, who was the administrator at the time, I threatened to go out and put antique plates on all the plows. And, you know, he laughed at me because I said, Jimmy, who was the maintenance man at the time, kept them all looking so good. When people see this stuff, they said, that fleet's in good shape. That fleet is great. And they were all twenty-five years old. And since then, I know we've gone out and we've updated it, so they're now all nineteen-eighty-something.
Right.
And they've been bought as used vehicles and put a plow on them, and now we're back to the same situation we were in ninety-five. We could probably put antique plates on all of them, and maybe that's what we need to do, so when people see, you know, what's out there working every day for them. And one of the reasons they've lasted as long as they have is because we're one of the few towns that has a separate plow fleet and only uses them to plow, so we get a lot more use out of them. So, you know, we do appreciate all of that. That department has done, whether it would be Jimmy, whether it's been Paul, you know, keeping this stuff on the road. But you're right. At some point in time, we do have to recognize, you know, what it's going to take to get it back up. And we shouldn't get to this point, you know, every time that the whole fleet's antiques. And I think you're right.
Yeah, and I understand now is not the time, but I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention again.
Excuse me, the one more thing you should do is make clear to the budget committee, the new members.
I certainly, I certainly plan on, on having a presentation for them.
You know, going back to the personnel that you have, one of the, the snowstorm before this that was really, was large. I know that you guys went home at five o'clock. They came back in at seven-thirty in the morning.
Right.
Because I called at seven-thirty, just to see how things were going there, and they were, they were there. So you can't ask anything more than that.
I certainly can. I'll say that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Steve, thank you for your time on Saturday.
Go on to the senior center.
Mr. President, if I could have five minutes.
No, take it. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
We have a thousand-dollar increase in your budget, yes. Can you believe that?
Decrease, decrease.
Decrease. Well, we've been level-funded for many, many years. I get a little increase and then we get level-funded again. So my, my biggest concern, actually, as I was looking at the requested, requested figures, we did make some adjustments on those, and I don't know if that's, the adjustments are going to show. Jim?
Yes, they're in there.
No, no, under the requested amounts, yesterday we changed?
No, the requested amount wasn't changed. I concentrated on getting the, the third column.
Okay.
The recommendation lined up.
All right. There's one, Director Services, I'd like to point out, because when we initially did the budgets, we put in for a twenty-seven pay period year, okay? So that requested amount should be forty-seven, five, seven, nine, instead of the forty-nine, just to...
Forty-seven, five, seventy-nine?
Yes.
Thank you.
My, my biggest concern with this budget has always, is heat. Because my building is old and we have high ceilings and we use a lot of oil. I am down to about two thousand dollars left for this year. And they've been delivering oil pretty much every week. I've been getting hit with that, so. And the electric just skyrocketed. So those, those are my two major concerns. And of course, my bus breaking down at fourteen thousand dollars. We do have more people using the bus, and they live further out, so it's taking the driver a little more time to get to everyone. So his hours have increased a little bit, but I try to hold it down as much as I can. We, we are no longer bringing people home and then coming back. I make everyone wait until everyone has finished shopping, finished with lunch at the senior center, and then we do one trip around town. That's saving us about a tank of diesel a month. So that makes a big difference. Our roof is still leaking.
What is the status of that roof?
Well, we only have fifteen thousand dollars.
I know.
Okay, the estimate to repair everything is thirty thousand. We need to sit down with the building inspector, Bob Martin, and we need to come up with a spec with what we're going to do with fifteen thousand dollars. Whether we're going to do sides, you know, we definitely have to remove the coupalis, repair the chimney, but then are we just going to repair one side? Or, I mean, we have to come up with a specific-
And who has that responsibility?
Bid process. Well, I, Bob has done it in the past, but I don't know if it would be a good idea to have Bob and Gareth or...
We are, we are working on a bid spec in conjunction with CDBG because they require certain things to be in the advertisement, and we really haven't rushed it at this point because of the fact that this is not a good time of year with all the snow and everything. But it's moving along. It'll be done in the spring, always spring.
I shouldn't live so long. I mean, we discussed this in the fall, so at least the spec should be done by this time.
Well, we do have a spec, but it needs to be reviewed to ensure that, you know, we can do what we want to do and get the maximum benefit.
Yeah, the problem is the amount of money that we have to work with.
Okay, okay, Janice.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, again, I want to commend you and your staff because I've been over there and seen the nice work that you do over there.
Thank you.
You know, and again, like everyone else, you know, we're looking to see where, you know, where the savings can be and so forth. And I think with our seniors in particular, you know, that they deserve to, you know, have the best that we can afford, you know, to do for them. But, you know, these tough times, we're really going to have to look at everything, and I really appreciate the work that you've done there so far.
I also want to point out that I do have a part-time afternoon person whom I pay through a state grant, which this year was cut down to five thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I receive a Senate grant for fifteen hundred. So that's how I have been keeping her. She is down to sixteen hours a week. She does not work on Mondays. I'm not real optimistic about receiving grant money in the upcoming year. So that means I will be down an afternoon person. So that's just going to make things even tighter.
What, what state grant is that funded through?
It comes through the Department of Elderly Affairs, the fifty-four eighty-three. It's considered a community service grant.
Mm-hmm.
And the Senate grant is the one we received from Senator Philag.
Yeah. And you're in touch with Philag and John Loughlin and-
Yeah, nobody knows-
Where they are.
-what's going on at the moment, so. That's pretty much it.
I know you'd love a new bus, but...
Not even going to mention it.
But the chief would like a new ladder truck, too.
But, you know, we've managed to do pretty well with getting our donated buses from Ripton. And, you know, they lasted several years, and his, Mike is really good. My bus driver is really good about standing on top of everything. You know, he was a former construction company owner, so he, he stays right on top of everything, which is really good for us. However, he is eighty-two years old, so.
Whoa, Janice.
He's in, he's in great shape. He's, he's really, you know, he's really a great man. And, and he does, I mean, every little thing, he's on top of that bus, so.
Trying to think outside the box. Would it help your workload in any way if we suspended birthdays for the last, next couple of years? Should we have fewer seniors getting up there?
Well, we, yeah, if we could suspend them and stop them from, you know, getting much older.
I've canceled my own for a couple of years.
The younger ones coming in have been great. You know, we, we have a really great exercise class going, and we do have a lot of younger seniors in there. And that class, between that and the watercolor class generates close to six thousand dollars a year that I turn back in to the town, so. And everything we have is old, too. Our computers are old, our copying machines, and, you know, that was all purchased with, with grant money. And in the years that I've been there, I've already put on a new roof. We've had all-new hardwood floors put in, all-new windows, a new heating system. Bathrooms have been revamped and everything is, you know, up to the handicapped accessibility codes. I mean, we've, we've done what we could to maintain the building. However, all that money is now going away, so.
And again, that was all grant money, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, this, this really is an example, I guess, of the inequality in which we're sharing the financial problems in town. I hope the, the people in, you know, every once in a while, you hear somebody complaining about even the senior center, you know, there's another expense. This is an example, I think, of good work that's being done on a shoestring. And I would urge you, if this town can ever turn its financial situation around, begin addressing and bringing to our attention some of the things you need there at the senior center. You know, I should, and I'd like to again point out that you're doing the same this year with less money. The request you're making for the next fiscal year is less than this year, which is remarkable, considering the reaction we get from some groups in town looking for money.
Thank you. I also want to point out that as far as my position goes, I've worked for the town for twenty-three years. It is my town. I was born here. I've grown up here. I've remained here. And I take care of these people. They're my family, and they are my family in a, in a sense. I do a lot of things that I believe no other senior center director in the state does. I go to all the trainings for the health insurance, for the Medicare pot D. I do medical assistance applications. I do food stamps. I make the phone calls. I'll stay on hold for an hour if I have to, to get through to an insurance company or whatever, to speak to anyone I have to, to try to get their problems straightened out. I do have a part-time CIS worker who comes in on Tuesdays, and she alternates Tuesdays with a ship worker, which is CIS's Community Information Specialist, and a ship worker is a senior health insurance program volunteer. But they're only there for three hours once a week. I pick up all that slack in between because a lot of people, elderly people in this town either don't drive, or they don't drive out of Tiverton. And for them to have to go into Portsmouth or Middletown or wherever, you know, whatever day they're in another community, isn't fair to them. So over the years, I have learned how to do all of this so that I can service my people right here in town. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Janice. And I think we all appreciate it. You know, we know the good works that you do there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, goody.
Good morning. Good morning, David.
I'm sure you said, "Oh, goody" in a very positive way.
I did. Jim, can I ask you a question, David? The projected assessments for this upcoming fiscal year?
Yes. Currently, we're projecting that the overall town value will decrease somewhere between fifteen and twenty percent.
For?
For residential properties.
Okay. Now, that would be reflected in the upcoming?
Correct. It says that value will be reflective as of 12/31/08, which will be reflected on the residents' June tax bill.
Does that mean taxes have to be increased to make up for the difference?
The tax rate would be increased.
The rate would be increased to make up the difference, you know, but-
That's correct.
It, it doesn't have the effect on the end bill.
Right, right. It's-
Everything were level-funded, there would be no- Everything were level funded, there would be no overall tax, I mean, overall dollar amount.
There would not be no impact on the resident, that's correct. And the residents, just to let them know that the current statistical revaluation is still ongoing. They, the revaluation company and myself, we're going to be out in the field over the next several weeks driving by every individual property with the updated value to make sure that it makes sense and discover any errors that may still be out there. And the residents will be receiving a notification in the mail sometime in March of the preliminary assessment. And at that time, if they do have any concerns, they can contact the revaluation company, which will be listed on that letter. And they can schedule a hearing with the revaluation company to discuss any issues that they may have.
Would you care to comment on this? The number of sales in this town has probably decreased under this statistical value from the last either revale or statistical revale.
That's correct. They, they have decreased. We, we don't have that many sales right now. We have roughly 100 that we're taking a look at. And to help us out, what we're also doing is taking a look at some surrounding communities of like neighborhoods and taking a look at their sales also, just to give us some additional statistical information that we can utilize. But, yeah, it is a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah, I was going to say, how relevant is, is trying to take another community of...
Not, it, it gives us some guidance. We're not going to hang our hats on their values.
Okay.
But at least with the limited number of sales we have, we're doing our own analysis with anything that's taking place in town. But when we do take a look at those external sales, if something is just way out of whack, then we're going to say, hey, what's going on? But if there's some, some correlation between the sales, then, then we're going to be more comfortable with what we're seeing in town.
Compare for us, if there was 100 sales, we'll say last year, the last time a statistical revale was done, how many sales would you have?
Ballpark, I probably would have said double.
Double.
I hope those men will see how deteriorated the property is in South Tiverton.
Stone Church is just, that road itself.
Just falling apart. Stone Church is just falling apart.
Every time I have to do reviews, I'm prepared to go on that road.
Pretty nice houses on that road, isn't it?
I know of one in particular.
Perfect. I mean, it's just in great shape. It's been recently painted.
Well, I think Donald Trump was looking at it, wasn't he?
Yeah, he was.
But it was out of his league.
Yeah.
What, as far as our growth in, in the last year, are those numbers going to be skewed by developments like the Bourne Mill?
No, not at this point.
Okay.
But, but even with the Bourne Mill, if, if there is a substantial project like that, I, I think that when we take a look at the overall number of homes that are built and the growth numbers, if there is something that's outstanding, such as the Bourne Mill, if that was just completed, say, in one year, and, you know, you're looking at a $7 million project, we, we would try to extrapolate that out so we would have a more of a true picture of the true growth. But the growth has been declining in town, obviously because of the economy and such. This year, because we are doing the revaluation, it's a little bit more difficult because we are working with the live data, updating the new land values and the construction costs and such. But we're, we're estimated as about a 1 percent growth.
Thank you.
So that would be factored in, 1 percent growth factored into a 15 to 20 percent decline?
Well, it's 1 percent growth as far as the tax base itself.
Right.
But we, we, yeah, we're still looking at the 15 to 20 percent decline. Commercial property is going to be a little bit more flat than that. But it generally is.
Looking at your, at the actual figures, I just wanted to note that it looks like the total administrative recommendation is going to be a, not quite a $2,000 reduction over the current budget. Is, is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, I did do some quick review this morning. And on my line for the telephone, 212-535, the recommendation's for $1,000, but I do believe that I can reduce that down to 800. And has a matter of more corporation office supplies. I can reduce that by another 400.
And I, I would presume that the professional services are at least partially driven by the statistical revale?
A little bit. There's some of that. We are, the statistical revale, we're getting reimbursed by the state by 80 percent. We have a responsibility of $27,000 on that. The, we, we do have a line item for that, which I'd like to address at some point. But as far as the professional services, some of that does involve some additional mailings that we're going to have to do, some additional behind-the-scenes work that's outside of the contract of the revale. So we will have some expense there. And we do also have to update our tax maps. And that's, that can be expensive.
Thank you.
Personally, I think we have a lot of professional service already in the assessor's office. The assessor especially does a good job.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Listen, he's just trying to soft-soap you for that.
I understand.
Any other questions in the assessor? And Dave, thank you for your time this morning.
Okay. You know, like I said, mentioned, the only thing I'd like to mention about the revaluation budget is last year, we did have $27,000 set aside. As you may be aware, the General Assembly had been taking a look at changing the schedule of property revaluations in the state of Rhode Island. As you may recall, it had been once every 10 years. Now it's once every nine, with full revaluations every ninth year. Currently, this is our second statistical update, so our next is a full. And I'm anticipating, here's the bad news of it, is that we're probably going to have to spend somewhere around $360,000 for this full revaluation in 2011. So...
And that's without the help of the...
I'm sorry.
And that's without any state help?
Right. Full revaluations, the state does not have any reimbursement whatsoever. So right now...
Another one of our issues we need to bring up with our assembly members.
Well, but you know, by 2011, I don't want to be, but it is a couple of years down the road. Even the state may be in a little bit better.
They may be. And, yeah, I just wanted to bring to your attention that, you know, if we do do a budget that out every year, that would be the wise way to go at some point. Instead of having a $360,000 item in one year, perhaps to budget that out. Consul Roderick had been looking for ways of saving some money. And that's actually one of the areas where I am going to try to address something with municipal affairs. When you do a full revaluation, most of that expense is hiring this outside vendor. And they have to have data collectors go to every single property. So I'm looking to do more of that in-house and having a revolving schedule where certain portions of the town are covered every single year in-house so we can get away from that data collection expense. I did bring that up with municipal affairs a couple of times. Feel a little hesitant to do that because, well, we've never done it that way, is the response I get. But I think the way that the state budgets are running the town budgets, they might be a little bit more, more agreeable in the future. So I am going to continue to explore that.
Do you have any idea what drove that reduction from 10 to nine years?
Yeah, 3, 6, 9. Obviously, they wouldn't want you to do a statistical revale in the ninth year and then a full revale in the 10th. So it kind of made more sense. We'd like to see him, you know, maybe stretch it out to 12 and do three in between. But it sounded to me like it was driven by the fact that the statistical revales are every three years. And it made more sense not to do a statistical and then the following year have to do a full.
Should cancel the statistical.
Yeah. You know, you wonder, would the housing market sort of, at some point, it's going to level?
Right.
And I'm sure the three-year was to take care of the bubble. And that bubble is going away.
Yeah. Apparently, what happened in the mid-'90s, early to mid-'90s, the state had commissioned a study on property revaluations. And out of that study, the recommendation was actually to change that 10-year cycle to a more frequent schedule to more accurately reflect the current market for property owners. Because over the span of 10 years, there's different levels of appreciation and depreciation in town values. So they wanted to make sure that there was no inequities built in over that 10 years. So the more frequent revaluations helps eliminate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you think we're going to be able to squeeze you in before lunch, Gareth?
Oh, good. Good morning.
Good morning, Gareth. It's hard to ask questions like you.
Goodbye, Janice.
Gareth? The number of building permits that have been issued this year versus year ago, two years ago, do you have any figures on those?
I do. I don't have them with me. But basically, the trend has been that we were, we had, we had experienced a shift about when the, the mortgage crisis burst. We experienced the shift from, away from new housing starts to remodels, additions, and so forth. That's sort of a normal trend, something that happens all the time.
Right.
That lasted right up pretty well through November. And then we experienced a precipitous drop in everything. Some of that is seasonally driven, but not all of it. So it's been, it's been well down. What has kept us going in the past is that, is that even if single-family dwellings were off, it usually resulted, and it did this year also, usually resulted in a, a number more additions, remodels. And the work we do for an addition is the same amount of work essentially as we do for a full house. So our workload hasn't changed. Our revenue is slightly off, but that's been offset by Bourne Mill, which is, which has been a tremendous boost in terms of revenue and a couple of other developments which are still going along at a slow rate, but still going along. They're, they're still putting up a few houses in Winterbury, still the Cotrell Farms. A number of houses have gone up there in progress. So it hasn't stopped, but it's very slow at the moment.
Gareth, I'm sure you saw the same news story I saw about regarding boarding up houses. I guess it was in the city of Central Falls.
Mm-hmm.
And I see you have a thousand for boarding up buildings. And again, they were talking, they were getting 13, 14, 15,000 to board a building. I know they're dealing with, with, you know, with three families, but, I mean, that was per unit. And I'm saying, you know, and I guess Providence is around 2,000 or 3,000. Obviously, it's a city. But, you know, I'm wondering, you know, how do we be able to maintain such a low cost?
So far, so far, we haven't had that many. And the ones that we have had... Well, first of all, let me put it this way. A lot of the boarding of buildings happens when we have a fire or something. In which case, the normal procedure would be to go out the next day, assess what's happened, and get a contractor in to board the building up. I work closely with Chief Lloyd, and I go out at the time of the fire and I get the boarding of the building sorted out that night, make sure that they have somebody come in right then to board it up, which does two things. Number one, it doesn't leave it open for 24 hours. And number two, it puts it on the homeowner or the insurance company to hire that person and get them there to do it so that we stay out of it. I'm very careful about that. The few that we have had, most of them I've been able to handle with getting Bob Martin to go down and put a padlock on a door or something. These are abandoned houses. So we handle it that way. And then in the other cases, in one case, Bob went and put a piece of plywood up for me that was already on the property. So we've been very lucky. We've been extremely lucky. The last couple of years, that, that line item has been practically stripped away and used for other things because we haven't had any instances of this. But it's very, it would be very easy to use that entire $1,000 up in one triple decker, for example.
Thank you.
It's the relative of the mayor.
Yes. Close friend.
Close friend of the mayor on Central Falls.
Anybody else have any questions in the building official?
No questions?
Well, you know, you follow the... You know, it's hard to beat somebody. Nothing to beat them up over. We, we do understand the dilemma in every single department. It's difficult. Fortunately, we have a department that at least covers the expenses and then puts a little bit back to the town.
Yeah. I, I did, I did put a request in for a capital item this year, as I did the last two years. And that's a vehicle. And I just bring it to your attention so that I can be on the record more than anything. I don't expect it. I, I carry a $3,000 a year automobile expense. I just finished paying $1,300 in repairs on my vehicle, which is well over 100,000 miles. And it's really not all that well-suited to the work I do. And so I've, I've, once again, asked for that, that little four-wheel-drive vehicle.
Yes?
Understandable.
We could get you two, one for each foot.
We'd love to buy it.
Yeah, I know.
Here we are. It's going to be parked next to the ladder truck and next to Janice's bus.
And the sweep, and the sweeper and...
Not to make light of those issues, and I know how difficult it is in construction sites. You know, an old Crown Vic with we, we'll drive. It's like, you're lucky we ain't have a tow bill bigger than, you know, your expense. Some of those sites are not the easiest thing to get in and out of. But we, we do have those items which, you know, are needed in, in the back of our head. And you just understand, and I, we appreciate the fact...
Of course, I do.
That you do understand that. You know, it's, believe me, it's, it's nothing personal on anybody, you know, anybody in town. It's just, we've got to get through a tough time and we, you know, we do know what I need to... Just, you know, I got, I got them at home and they're not going to get mad either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gareth.
Thanks.
I guess I kind, I scheduled that we should take a break. Then we want to take that break or if we got, you know, our next, the police department's the next and he probably ain't going to come in till...
Treasurer?
The planner here that...
We move on to the treasurer.
We got the treasurer here. Let's, let's bring him on up.
Lou, do you want to take just a ten-minute break?
Well, yeah, we're good. Okay, yeah, we're going to stretch for a second so you can just relax. That's not a bad idea.